in the past, we've been communicating the budget process and it's kind of been a one-sided thing, so for, except for GOV 101 session, it's mainly been a delivery of information through normal channels, and it's been concentrated at the beginning and end of the budget process. This plan represents a new way of looking at how we deliver that information. We hope the plan will create a conversation with the public using a variety of methods such as web components, online content, social media, placed media, and in-person presentations. Much of that will involve soliciting feedback along with delivering the information, and we're not just discussing the process, we're talking about the why of what's being done. Also, the messaging will be consistent across the entirety of the budget process. As you'll see in a timeline later in the budget, or in the presentation, this plan will run several months through the process. And one last different from prior, difference from prior efforts is the cross-departmental approach. Having multiple departments involved will result in more complete information, and that will be important particularly during a revaluation year.
All right, to level up our three areas, along with help from tax and the county manager's office and other partners, we'll work to enhance different parts of the process. So when it comes to the strategy team, our work is all about getting valuable feedback from the community that can help our departments make good decisions. So we'll ask questions that solicit reactions to areas department heads need help with. We'll attempt to a level of specificity that moves the conversation forward. So rather than asking what to do with a dollar amount, we'll ask the public to give advice about their lived experience. What about X, Y, and Z do you want more of to make better or to change? We'll group feedback into themes and share with department heads and strategy task force, task forces for consideration, and we'll report back to the themed groups. Along the way, we'll provide participants with regular updates on how public input is being used in the budget process, kind of like a Domino's pizza tracker. Your feedback is under review by the strategy team. It's under consideration by department heads. It'll be used to perhaps inform the budget process, inform long-term plans, or questions on our next community survey. Then we'll keep participants informed about general budgetary information and of course, answer any individual questions that may come up. We hope to start a relationship with folks who participate by giving them a secondary call to action. So it may be regular invitations to attend, to participate, to share, or to provide input. We'll also have capacity, we hope, to make some personal phone calls or send emails to check in and learn about how they live their life in Cabarrus County. In addition to the tools we currently use, we're researching what an all-in-one digital engagement online platform could help us achieve. This could include forums, idea ideation platforms, places for community feedback and ideas on a map, guest books, and questions where people can have discussions within them. And then I'll let Raj tell you about the what, what the budget team's up to.
Okay. So the budget team and I are excited to be a key part of accomplishing the strategic plan goal of engagement. We're planning to use a number of engagement tools, using both in-person and technology. One of, some of the tools we're looking at using are a creative informative FAQ that'll answer the most asked questions from the public and keep that regularly updated, and also distributing that FAQ through our social media, our website, and also through our presentations. The other thing the budget team is looking at is making our presentations a little bit more digestible, and making them a little bit shorter, and with the help of our communications team and strategy team, hopefully a lot more fun and interactive. We're looking at like breaking out a budget presentation into one that would be like educate, where we'll talk about the budget process, how we go about making decisions, and the why, and then also the second one would be what we're calling communicate, and this where we would like focus on the highlights of the FY '25 budget, going through what was decided on. An increased number of these sessions, right now we do one GOV 101 at the end of the budget process, and, or towards the end of the budget process. With this methodology, what we're looking at is one at the start of the process, we talk about our whole process and the whys and hows, and then come back later with a GOV 101. Again, we're not looking at a full five-hour GOV 101, we're looking at maybe possibly about a two-hour GOV 101, so a little shortened, concise process. The other thing we're also looking at, we have an online budget book, it's got a lot of valuable information out there, so we're going to come up with a video tutorial on how people can use that to access our web online book, and also, we're also looking at enhancing our budget books, so we'll have more links in there, so if, say for example, a paragraph talks about this St. Stevens Park, we'll have a link that'll take him to the CIP page where we're going to be able, you know, where all the numbers and information is. So just putting links in the right areas where people don't have to scroll through the whole budget book looking for things. The other thing we're looking at also is developing a tax receipt. So just like you go into a store and you get a receipt for what you bought, this will be a tax receipt where citizen can go online, plug in, I paid $1,000 in taxes, they'll produce a receipt that shows them your $1,000 went towards these functions, and we'll have public safety, human services, and so forth. And then within that, we'll have a breakdown of, and the public safety will be like the sheriff's office, we'll provide a link to our program summary on our budget book that'll give them more information on what the sheriff's office does. So we're trying to keep the process completely transparent where people have more information easily and readily available. That's the goal of the budget offices and this engagement.
Raj, I wanted to ask you a quick question while, before we move on. Is that what you just described, something new with the links that will take, show what the citizen pays and how it's appropriated? Is that new? Have we been doing that? I don't think we've been doing that.
I don't believe we've done a tax receipt before, so this would be something new.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a great idea.
And as part of the communications involvement in the process, we'll be responsible for creative development of materials, that's writing, design, video production, all of the general things we normally do, along with distribution and audience development. So that's identifying groups for presentations and finding the best outlets for the specific efforts. Our main goal, as Raj said, our main goals are creating digestible, engaging content, making sure people can interact with it.
All right, so here's our tentative timeline. From December to February, we're going to work on that education line that you saw earlier, which means we're going to share information on the budget process and revow. We're going to focus on early distribution to make sure folks are informed early in the process. We're going to include new virtual components, create short and entertaining presentations. Then from January through April, that's our collaboration phase. We're encouraging participation through engagement platforms, promoting discussion prompts and interaction, communicating through feedback tracker tools, enrolling input into themes that inform the county's strategy. And then from May through June, we'll communicate timelines and actions, what's funded by Cabarrus County, program impacts and FY '25 highlights, so that'll be focused on the budget that's going to be up for a vote. So here's a review of what we've discussed today. We'd like to thank you for your time, and we want to thank the other members of our team who are sitting behind us. We spent weeks going over these different aspects and trying to come up with a plan that we thought was comprehensive and that we had the capacity to fulfill. We've listed three questions here on the right that we'd love your feedback on today or in the weeks to come. Do our goals of education, collaboration, and communication meet expectations for budget engagement? How can we deliver community input in a way that benefits the board? And are there areas or populations we should prioritize? So with that, we'll turn it over to you for your questions.
Questions for Kasia. Yes, sir.
Let's just say, I like the way that you have it presented. Transparency was, was a massive goal for us that we wanted, and I think if we can deliver on that, and that's as transparent as we can be, as far as how can we deliver community input, I'm not opposed to several public discussions at our meetings. I mean, I know we get one right before the budget goes, maybe we should have a couple more just to see what happens. We are here to represent them, and so if we give more opportunities to speak, more opportunities to show up, then, then maybe we can get more of that input.
Yeah, I would agree with having more opportunities for public input. I think in recent years, we increased that number and did not see a recognizable increase in people participating, but I think if we make those available and make that offer to, to folks to have an opportunity, I think that's about as important as whether they I really liked the receipt idea. I know that the online budget book is excellent. It has a tremendous amount of information. I went on it one night last week, and I was looking for the pie charts that we've always had. It says, "This percentage of our budget goes to public safety, this percentage goes to education, et cetera." I think at one point, we had some that said, "These are mandated services," and it shows how small the portion is that is discretionary, that we actually make decisions on. I could not find it, but I was in a big hurry at the time because I was having that conversation with someone. But to have the availability to go in there and say, "Okay, I paid $1,000 in taxes, here's what it went to," this much, you know, I think that's a very clear example to folks, and that will be extremely helpful.
But one of the things that really concerned me, Kasia, and I think you have addressed this, and what your proposal is, is the last community survey that we did, 44% of the people in Cabarrus County don't think that we're transparent. You know, I really find that alarming because of all that we do. And just like Commissioner Wortman just said, you know, we would like to have more meetings, but then, like Commissioner Morris said, we have the meetings and you have very, very little turnout. And how do you address that? I really don't know. And then, you know, the other thing, 30% of the Hispanic respondents are dissatisfied with the value received from the tax dollars. So you've addressed that by having the, what do you call it, that we just talked about?
Receive.
Receive. Shows what goes where, and that will help with that, I think. But, you know, some of these numbers from the community survey there was alarming to me, particularly the transparency thing, because that's our number-one goal, and we're failing. I mean, you would think you would at least get 50%, so we just got to do a better job, so I know.
Thanks for the presentation. I think you guys are doing a tremendous job of getting it out there to, you know, people that's on social media, they'll get it. But how do we reach the ones that aren't up to date on social media? I mean, are we looking at, and I'm sure you may already do this, you provide information like at the libraries, the parks, the ball fields, the, all those different places to get, you know, if you had a bulletin board type thing, and I'm sure you already do that. But trying to reach those people is the difficult part, I'm sure. The people that are real proactive on social media, they probably have access and can get any information they want. But I think, like the number three, the areas of populations we should prioritize, I think that's going to be the question. That's all. I agree. Yeah, and I apologize for missing the beginning of the presentation, got tied up in another meeting, but I'm looking at the page now that says, "Why address key concerns?" And 40, let's see, 33% don't know enough, aren't plugged in or aware to rate the county's level of public involvement and local decision-making. And I experienced a very graphic example of that this past week in meeting with a group of citizens, and without just about every item, every question that they asked me about, they asked me about a specific road project, and my answer had to be, "That's a state of North Carolina project." They asked me why a certain development was permitted, and my answer had to be, "That was permitted by the city." And the list went on. And so I think there's the general awareness of what decisions are made by the county versus what decisions are made by the municipalities versus what decisions are made by the school board is a very, very fuzzy line. And it has been my experience that most people are not terribly engaged in caring about it until they have a problem. And then when they have something that they're not happy about, that's when they're prepared to be educated about it. So how you force that is a question that I don't know the answer to. You know, it's hard to engage people until they want to be engaged.
Well, we hope to develop relationships with folks. We don't want to catch them on one side and then miss them on another. So a main component of the strategy is to make sure if somebody walks in the door that we're connecting them to the services and the understanding throughout the organization. We've had some presentations on the strategy, and we talked to folks about how can we better, you know, connect with residents, and they suggest that we start a website or a social media page. And so there's some education there, that we do have a website, cabarruscounty.us, by the way. And we do have social media pages, and you can follow and connect with us. But I think another challenge is, a lot of the programs we provide meet people when they're in a state of crisis. And when you're doing well in life, when things are going well, you kind of look at the headlines and you roll past it. And when you're in a state of crisis, that's the first time that you will put the headlines aside. You will let the newspapers stack up because you don't have time to read through the newspaper because you're dealing with life's greatest challenge. So, you know, it's a timing thing, too. How do you connect with people who are doing good and more passive about their interest? And then when they're in the position that they could need us most, aren't available to those outlets, so. We'll try, and then we'll try again and try again, so.
Well, and I think it's worthwhile to try because as the government 101 on the budget, without exception, I think most of the people that I've talked to after they have been through that class come away, say, "Okay, now I understand the process, and now I see why this is important." So I think it's very worthwhile to make those efforts.
Thank you.
For sure. Anything else? All right, thank you very much. Okay, we move now to discussion items for action. First up is the sheriff's office. We're happy to have Deputy Chief Tessa Burchett with us.
So good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman. So yes, I'm coming before you to ask to sign a new contract with Axon, an upgraded contract. And what Axon is, is the company that does our body worn cameras, our fleet, our car cameras, and of course, our tasers. We are in the fourth year of our current contract, a five-year contract. We're requesting to move to the new contract early because of the upgrades that the new products provide. It's basically much higher quality cameras in both the cars and the body worn cameras, wider angles, that type of thing, but specifically also, the in-car cameras, the next body or the next generation of them provide what's called LPRs, or license plate readers, which would then automatically alert our officers to a stolen vehicle or a wanted person that's entered NCIC, that type of thing. And the final piece of this is that we would also have our drone management system through Axon as well, moving away from another software. And it would also enable us, as say, an administration on a scene, we can actually view what the drone is viewing, and that could be as much as a mile, mile and a half away, to be able to see if it's an emergency situation, we can see what's happening on the scene. So what we've asked with the new contract is that they keep year one the same cost as it was for this budget year, so there's no budget impact for this year, and then the increase would then be spread over the remaining four years. And those, the dollar amounts are provided in the materials attached in the agenda. But to do this, I would ask to suspend the rules to vote on this tonight if possible because our current drone software is basically expired, and it would enable us to go to that now and just proceed. And I also ask that all of our Axon products be on this one contract, with the exception, the only thing that's separated now would be detention, the officers that have the cameras there. Do you have any questions about anything that I presented?
Is there a reason, you had mentioned that the cameras inside the, in the jail, is there a reason why those are separate?
Separate. We moved to those later. Some of that was just a cost because of implementing the entire agency at one time was a big increase. And in detention, we have camera systems already, but we have found that it does miss, it doesn't have audio. So we moved to that on a different cycle, and we are only in basically a year and a half into that contract, so we are keeping those two separate.
Good.
Any other questions? Okay, you have heard the request that we suspend the rules and vote on this tonight. So do I hear a motion to suspend the rules of procedure?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and I would entertain a motion to approve the contract between Cabarrus County and Axon Enterprises and authorize the county manager execute the contract on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to review or revisions by the county attorney.
So move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, we move now to item 4.2 from Active Living in Parks, 2024 Fees and Charges Updates, and we're happy to have Londa Strong and Byron Hagler on that item.
Good afternoon to you all, and it's that time of year for us. Just as a reminder, we do our fee and charge policy with the calendar year, not the fiscal year, so that we don't, if we increase something, it's not in the middle of a session or summer camp or something like that. So that's what we have done, and I know you all went through and read all of those. We have the fee and charges as well as the policy itself, and if there's anything specific that you need, feel free at any time just to shout it out. I'll just kind of highlight, Byron and I will kind of highlight going through here. We just did a summary for you. Page two, we're just changing the time that we enter to one month earlier. So if you all may remember, some of you will remember, several years ago, we had people wanting to be in the parks at 7:00 because it gets really hot in the summertime, and so we backed up the hours to come in then, but it gets hotter earlier now, it seems like, and stays hot longer than it did, so we backed it up a month, and that's basically all that one's telling you. And we, for consistency, we added Camp Spencer, even though there weren't a lot of people there at 8:00. We added that anyway so that we could be the same all the way across the board.
That also really is nice for the school schedule as well. So with kids getting out of school much earlier, that timing plays well to be opening earlier in June as well.
And like that next one, this is correction on the time, it said 5:00 a.m. instead of p.m., so that's all we were doing. The active center, active living center hours, we want, in keeping with what the library hours will be, since we will be combined very soon, and we're looking forward to that, we wanted to keep the hours the same so that we can go ahead and everybody do the same thing at the same time. Basically, for us, for the outside, it was closing at 8:00 instead of 9:00 on Saturday mornings. It's pretty much is all the change for us. We used to close at 9:00, so we'd back that up to 8:00. Holiday closings, just listed it as, instead of listing every one of them out, we tried to make it as condensed as possible. There were a lot of things spelled out day by day by day, and we just wanted to switch that over following the Cabarrus County office closing schedule. Park reservation time periods changed to keep all the parks on the same schedule. All park locations where we did have was Spencer, was the one left out.
Had the one left out, and then also just park hours on the weekends, changing from, in the wintertime, from 9:00 to 5:00 to 8:00 to 5:00, just when demand is truly wanted, and then adjusting those reservation timeframes to match that, so they would have their reservation to fall into that adjustment.
Page six, Franklin's Park, we increased the numbers. We made the numbers realistic as to how many could fit in Shed 1, how many could fit in Shed 2, the lower level and the upper level, because last year when we did it, it was a guess because everything wasn't completed, and we weren't sure what the number of tables would fit in with ADA and how many, keeping eyes certain width. And so we now have it. We know exactly how many people can be in Shed 1, how many can be in Shed 2, how many can be at the upper level and the lower level. And so we've, and on my neglect, where upper level of barn increased to 500, the lower level's supposed to increase to 400. It was 4 and 3, so we wanted to add that in there. That was my mistake, and I'd already changed a couple times, so I would go change it again. And in the winter months, November 1 through February 28th, we were decreased by $100 based on the amount of time that you're in there because we close early during those months.
The reservation time goes from 10:00 to 7:00 during the warmer months to 9:04 during the winter months, so just reducing that reservation cost.
So if somebody wants to reserve the barn for a holiday party in the evening, they can't.
Well...
Outside of park hours?
Today, you can. One of the things that we were, we put in here is that you could not. Several reasons, and I have an alternate in case you all don't like that. Several reasons. One is if the park during extra hours, normally that's the evening, normally it's after dark. And people are in the park doing things they're not supposed to be doing. We don't have staff in there that can be in every area. If you, the barn is open until 11:00, say, in the summer, but you can't play tennis. We don't want you walking on the trails because there's no lights out there. I guess you could play soccer if you rented the extra hours or softball the extra hours. It's just things that happen in the park when it's after hours are not the best things that could happen in the park. I'll just put it that way. And the biggest thing that got me was with the money that we've invested in that facility, and I know the other side of it is we want people to use it, we want to maintain it. We want it to be kept in pristine shape like it is right now. So that was the reason that we put in there, no after-hour reservations.
If it was a facility that was in downtown and had means of ease of access, and it's a lit pathway, but this is in the middle of a large piece of property that's not lit, and there's a lot of other things that could be going on and do, and thankfully, the way that our park operates now with our park hours, it's very limited window time of year where it gets dark before the gates close, before the park closes, and we have, in our opinion, see that we have much safer, better parks because of the staffing and because of keeping things from happening that are more hidden.
Currently, the policy says that it's a $100 flat fee and $50 per hour for a minimum of two staff members to have the park open, and of course, now one of those staff members would be in the barn because we have a person that stays in the barn anytime it's rented. It's kind of hard to close the gate. You'd have to have a person sitting there for emergency purposes and not let anybody else in. So that would be two people, and then we would want to have, you've got to get people out of the park, first of all, especially when it's warm and people, the park closes at 9:00, and somebody has a reservation... and somebody has a reservation till 11:00. Then we've got to have somebody getting the people out of the park. Or do you let them stay? And just, so it's just, it was just logistics.
So you're saying currently they can, up until this policy's changed. So I'm a little confused. On page eight, it says after hours barn rental. And it says minimum of two hours and not to exceed 12:00 midnight.
That's the, that's the current.
That's the current. Yes. Yes, yes.
That current allows them the opportunity to pay for an extended rental. But that's, it causes many issues that Londa alluded to on top of staffing, burning out staffing to try to.
I understand.
But that's what our.
I just want to make sure, so this portion's going to be struck out.
Well, that's what we're proposing.
Okay. I just wanted to, I didn't know if the highlighted meant that it was, I assumed it was just like a change and not, not a total strike away.
Yeah, no, that's what, that's what we're looking at. But as I said, I have a plan B here if you also desire to have rentals.
I think exactly what you guys are saying makes sense. You know, I mean, it would be difficult to have someone sitting at the gate, not allowing people to come in. You have after hours, somebody's left in the park, gate's closed. Seems like there could be a lot of issues.
There have been.
I'm sure there have.
So what, what sort of an impact will this have based on, let's say, the month of December?
Joshua had five reservations, he had five extensions this year.
Uh huh. Just this month?
November and December.
November and December. And so that means something that starts before the park closes and extends beyond closing hours.
Beyond closing is the majority of it. We do have with softball tournaments, sometimes they request to come in earlier so they can line and drag the fields if it was raining the night before or something like that. But our staff's usually in there earlier anyway, getting things ready. So that hasn't been an issue.
Right.
Other than that, I don't, I don't recall any early, open early requests.
Nothing that couldn't be adjusted.
Yeah.
So this will not affect any reservations that are currently on the book?
No. No. Not at all.
We would hold, you know, we would hold what is currently being purchased or held too. This is just means to, what's in our opinion best for the management of that and for the safety of everyone.
Couple of the Rangers that have worked those shifts when the park was closed, but the barn supposedly closed, but the barn had an extra hour rental. And they said that they find lots of, I won't say illegal, a lot of things that you really don't want to drive upon.
Prohibited.
Prohibited. There you go. That's, that's the best word, prohibited.
So for the, the sidewalk that goes from the parking lot up to the barn, along Harmony Park there, that's not lighted. And the parking lots are not lighted.
Parking lots are lighted.
They are lighted.
Yes. The overflow parking lot, the one on the far end of the barn is not, but the main parking lots are.
Uh huh. Yeah.
How do you hold people to that site?
Right.
And they have free rein.
Yeah. Yeah. So once you open the gate, they can go anywhere in the park. And you can't tell when people are coming through the gate, whether they're going to the function at the barn or whether they're just riding around.
Right. And we talked about this for hours, actually, over the last few weeks. And one of the things like soccer is going late in November. So mama drops them off at five o'clock when the park's open. And if we close the gate and they're, they're over at eight, then, and mama decided she got through early and wants to come pick up Johnny, she can't get in if we close the gate.
Right.
And I don't know, we'd have to have somebody sitting at the gate, seriously, if we close the gate. But, and that's just not something that we want to do, is close the gate. If the park's open, the park's open. If it's closed, it's closed.
And, and that's the way you've been doing it up to this point?
Yes. And people can come in, they can walk in, you know that as well as I do, come in off of the backside from Pitcher Park, come in off of Stale Road, come in many different ways and do things that they're not supposed to do, as we all know, they do when we're closed. But we would really like that not to happen while we're open.
Right.
But we're open for discussion on that. You know, that's nothing that, we are married to. We just think it probably the safest thing for the patrons and the facility. A lot of times, maybe some of the prohibited items are coming into those after hour parties.
Items and activities.
Yes. Yes.
And Mr. Morris, to your point of what would, what would be the difference? It's a loss of revenue more than likely during that winter, those winter months. That's the, that would be the biggest impact. And it would be a very small amount of revenue looking at the entire year.
Right. Yeah. And I guess I'm, my concern would not be that so much as.
Being available to the.
Being available to the taxpayers that, that own it.
Right.
You know, if, if there, you know, are additional costs associated with that, then I think that should be absorbed by those persons using it, which sounds like could be pretty substantial because you might have to have four staff people instead of.
Yeah, minimum of three, minimum of three, too.
Yeah. I mean, one to monitor the gate and one to patrol the parking lots and one to be in the.
In the barn. Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we base that on fifty dollars an hour. Some will be full time, some will be part time. So the full time people with benefits and things would be close to that fifty and then a hundred dollar flat fee just for any setup or whatever that might have to take place. So a hundred, and then for two, minimum of two hours. So that would be two hundred and fifty dollars minimum that they would have to pay above and beyond the rental fee.
Right. And the rental fee for, to use the barn.
Upper level, 500, if this is approved, lower level, 400. For, and we only have one time period.
Right. When you say one time period?
We used to have a morning time period and an afternoon time period. And we just switched to, we found that most people didn't, if they had it, was it nine to three? Nine to two? Nine to two, well, nine to two. And then most people didn't come in until 10 or 11 o'clock. They weren't there. And then they'd have their picnic or luncheon or whatever it was and leave. Same thing with the afternoon. Then you had a three to eight. And people wouldn't come in at three o'clock. Some might come in and set up. But so they'd only had an hour to get everybody out, cleaned, trash emptied, floors mopped, table, and maybe a new setup before the next group came in. And when the new barn came up, we're like, let's do one.
It was a lot more negativity with the morning reservations because they weren't showing up until 11 o'clock. And then they're rushed to get out at their timeframe. And it didn't look good on anybody for us to stand there and move them out when they chose that time slot. But we were giving it to them when they desired.
So it's at 10 to seven now. And then, you know, they can come whenever they want during that timeframe. But they're not coming, showing up at eight o'clock. Usually the ones that'll show up and correct me on this are shelters to get everything set up or maybe the grill going or whatever it might be so that for a big family reunion or a big church meeting or something like that. No, no, it's perfect, but we just try to.
The alternative would be if somebody were going to have a wedding reception on a Saturday, they might need that 12 noon set up for a three o'clock.
Right.
And so that would present problems if you had it broke into two.
Yes.
And aren't you doing quite a bit of that sort of event?
A lot of that type of stuff that, I know this sounds terrible, but normally the, when somebody calls and says, hey, I'd like to talk about a wedding, the first question that they're, or their first thing they're told is, you can't have alcohol.
Right.
And the majority, and we said, you know, go to the arena. And what, what percentage? Seventy percent go somewhere else.
Right.
So that's another issue.
Other questions?
Londa, you've been doing this so long. And I trust your judgment on what needs to be done, yours and Byron's. And, you know, I'm like Chairman Morris. I, I want the citizens to be able to have access to it. And I know you do too.
Yeah.
You know, you know how many people come and how many people go. We keep track of all of that. And it's the quality of life benefits for our citizens. And so we want them to use it, but there are costs involved, unfortunately. And so, but I'm, I'm good with however you want to do it because, because I trust your judgment and I'm not even worried about it.
I wish we didn't have to worry about the, the bad part of what happens when somebody had extra hours or after hour rentals. If, you know, it would be nice if that was not an issue and then we could be open till midnight every day. But that's not where we are, unfortunately. I mean, they burned the barn down.
The good side to remember is that this, the facilities are open more than most others. We are closed four days out of the year. And so I feel like we are operating at the best time when folks want to play. And so we give them every opportunity possible. We're just going to do it as safely as possible.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
The rest of it, there is one increase. It was three dollars for paddle boats. And mini golf will be three, three dollars when we get that built back. So it's not there.
And fishing.
And fishing, yes. Three dollars. It was two and we increased. It's been two for a while.
They were all consistent at two dollars. So we, we felt it proper to increase all three as it being very cheap. And leaving the annual pass for fishing at fifty dollars for all parks. So increasing the daily pass, but pushing those to, to go ahead and, and take that annual pass to have that for all locations, removing the single park piece of that. But we are still very reasonably priced compared to many others.
Rest of it was just cleaning up some things. Active living centers, no, keeping in light with the library, I think I'm still speaking correctly, is that they have no outside reservations, after hour reservations. And we would do that same thing. So that we don't have, when we have the joint facility, that would be a nightmare.
Right.
Unless we had two or three staff there, just like we're talking about at the barn. So making sure if we had a meeting going on, that there weren't people running over to the library and vice versa. The policy side, there were just some changes on, some corrections, mostly active living in parks and not parks and recreation in there. Still cleaning up some of that. But other than that, that is it.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know. I know.
Yeah. And so you've got the, the next item as well. Phase two matching incentive grant project approval. And we welcome Ian Sweeney to join you.
Thanks, everybody. Good evening. So as you may know, the matching incentive grant program provides seed money for recreation opportunities and amenities in Cabarrus County for municipalities, nonprofits. Byron and I were talking earlier and we looked back just to get some figures. Since its inception in 1977, there've been a total of $5.4 million project costs associated with the matching incentive grant program. And less than half of that, at 2.3 million, was county matched. So this program has done a lot of good things and created some great opportunities in Cabarrus County since '77. So I came in front of the board in October with phase one. We had some, some funds left over and we went through phase two with a balance of $24,465 of remaining funds. We had two applications for phase two. One from Cabarrus County 4H, just to install a concrete pad to help accessibility with their new programming and outdoor classroom area at Cooperative Extension. And then a, an application from Hartsburg Athletic Association for ball field maintenance equipment at Rocky River. Both projects were recommended to be funded by the Active Living in Parks Commission. And the total match for these two is $15,622. So we're just asking the board for a motion to accept the grant award and to adopt the associated budget amendment.
Any questions on that item, commissioners? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move to item 4.4, Behavioral Health. Amended resolution to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds. We're happy to have Elise Pugh-Lilly with us for that item.
Good afternoon, all. And so this item is, the third time is the charm. So this is a resolution that was initially brought before you in January of this year. This was our first allocation of opioid settlement funds. As I mentioned, in October, when I also came before you for a revision for this particular resolution, the state provided guidance to jurisdictions that accepted these funds later in the year. So we didn't get that guidance until over the summer. So since then, when we did the revision of the resolution in October, as you all are probably aware, every time a resolution is approved, it has to go to the state. So it goes to the state, they review it. If they have any concerns at all, they might bump it back to you and say, hey, could you change X, Y, or Z? So that's exactly what happened with this particular resolution. Again, third time is the charm. And what we're going to do moving forward is we're going to actually work with their technical team to review our resolutions ahead of time so that we don't have to come back to you for amendments. And so, if you don't mind, thank you so much. If I can just have that. Just so I want to make sure that you all are fully aware of what the change would be. This was the resolution related to our allocation to Cabarrus Health Alliance, related to the peer support. And this was that, again, that very first allocation that was originally approved back in January of this year. And so this is to fund a peer support individual. What we did really well when we did the revised resolution in October is we described in much more detail about what that person will be doing. So when we did that, then the state came back to us and said, oh, now we have a better understanding of exactly what that individual will be doing. So you don't have to have all those strategies on the resolution. So could you take one of them off? And so that's, that's the only change that we're making to you at this time. So again, this is the resolution from October. They really liked the way that we described the service. They felt like everything is encapsulated well under our option three strategy. So they're simply asking us to, to remove the other strategy. And that is the only change that we're making. And we'll be good on this one moving forward after that change. Any questions? All right. Fantastic.
Great. Thank you. I think you have the next item as well.
I do. And so this is a whole different area. And this is related to emergency housing support for our youth in custody. And so as you all are probably aware, and, and let me be very clear about the fact that Cabarrus County is not unique in this issue, right? As you all are probably very aware, this is an issue that many jurisdictions across the state of North Carolina are contending with specifically as secondary to COVID-19. And so here in Cabarrus County, we have experienced an exponential increase in the number of children in custody over the course of the past five years. As you can see from my statistics, there has been a 75% increase in kids in custody in Cabarrus County dating back to January of 2019. We had 118. In October of this year, we had 206. And unfortunately, the problem is not resolving. It is only increasing in terms of the number of children that are coming across the doors, darkening the doors of our child welfare system. So as a result of that, oftentimes what happens is we have children who are languishing in our emergency room departments, our observation units here in Cabarrus County, and specifically at our atrium health facility. Since March of this year, there has virtually been not one week that we haven't had at least one, oftentimes more than one child, who's just sitting there. They're no longer needing that level of care that the hospital provides, but we don't have any place for them to go, right? And so as part of the solution, that's what we're coming to today, is a concept that we could potentially leverage here in Cabarrus County with your approval. And so I wanted to describe that to you in a little bit more. So one potential solution is for us to purchase a residence. And with that residence, what we would do after that is we would outfit it according to licensure requirements as required by the state. And it would be licensed up to a level three home. Um, and I'll talk a little bit more in terms of what that entails in just a minute. And what this would do is it would provide a safe, time-limited, supportive, and trauma-informed temporary placement solution for our kids who are in custody, who are stuck at places like our emergency room department or our observation unit. In terms of what we would be asking for, again, with your approval during our discovery process, would be one-time capital costs and expenses associated with purchasing of the home as well as upfitting it according to state regulations and licensure requirements. In terms of an exact amount, with your approval, in terms of moving forward with this project, we'll do our due diligence and, and come back to you with a figure so that you can make an informed decision as to whether or not it's something that you feel comfortable supporting. But right now, we're just wanting to, um, present the idea to you to see if this is something that we can move forward with in terms of doing more research. In terms of the youth that we would serve in a, a facility like this, and really it's a home, right? So it would be a home-like setting for our youth in custody. It would be particularly a solution for those youth who are new to custody. So they're entering custody for the first time and we don't know a lot about them yet. So we're in the process of doing our due diligence around assessments and getting information about this particular child. This would also be a potential solution for those whose placement disrupted. So something happened in their, either their foster home or residential service that was authorized by the MCO. And that child had to leave that placement pretty quickly. And that we needed someplace else for that child to go in the interim while we're determining our next steps. So this would also be a solution in those kinds of scenarios. And this would also be a solution for our youth who are awaiting a higher level of care. And by that, I mean, let's say a child goes to our emergency department due to some, some type of crisis, right? And so, um, through the assessment of those professionals, they determine, hey, this child needs psychiatric residential treatment services, or they need a level three group home. And we're working with our health plan, we're working with partners, um, health management through their care management department to find that placement, um, solution for that child. But unfortunately, we know that beds are very, very limited across the state of North Carolina at this time. And again, this is a problem that every jurisdiction in the state of North Carolina is experiencing. So again, here comes our home to be a temporary solution in those kinds of circumstances while we're awaiting and opening a longer-term solution for that child. This could also be a bridge program for some of our kids, particularly our older youth entering foster care, as well as this would, could potentially be an opportunity for us to keep sibling sets together. So just kind of, um, sharing all the different possible scenarios and solutions this could provide for our youth in custody. So in terms of how we would cover this in terms on, um, on a daily operational side, the good news is, is that the state is aware that this is an issue across the entire state. And so right now, they are considering new service definitions that would allow a service like this to be Medicaid billable. In the past, it really has not been a Medicaid billable service in terms of a short-term solution. But hopefully with the state's approval, it would be. I do have a representative from Partners here who is leading that effort in terms of getting a service definition like this approved by the state, should you all have questions. But this just, just kinda gives you a general synopsis in terms of what that service definition would potentially look like. So with that, I will open it up for any questions from the board.
Is there a possibility for the hospital to be willing to split the cost since it benefits both the hospital and the county?
That is not a conversation that we've had at this point. But during our due diligence, uh, we can certainly have that conversation to see what other potential solutions are out there.
At least the question that I have is the concept that you're talking to us about tonight. Are there any other neighboring counties using this concept? And if so, how is it working? Did they buy a house? Did they rent a house? And is it those type things?
Great. That's a great question. Thank you for that, Commissioner Shu. So I will tell you what I know. And again, as part of our due diligence process, we will look into this in more depth. I am aware of a variety of different local governments who have done something very similar. For instance, Cumberland County has a house that they own. Union County is exploring an option like this. I'm also aware, um, that neighboring Mecklenburg County has just recently purchased two homes. In fact, Mecklenburg purchased a home here in Concord to serve exclusively their kids in Mecklenburg County custody. We're not able to access the home because it's exclusively for Mecklenburg County, but it's located here in our community. So yes, there are other local governments who are having to come with innovation around how to address this significant issue that every jurisdiction practically in the state of North Carolina is experiencing at this point. But again, as part of our due diligence, we will, um, research it, um, further to see, are there opportunities for us to partner with a neighboring county around purchase of a home? Or what that might be, you know, going back to your question.
Didn't the state, or, uh, something came before us, I believe, last month about increasing?
Medicaid reimbursement rates, yes.
Yeah, well, for the foster homes, is that correct? So that, is that not alleviating some of the issue?
I think that that long-term, that that will be part of the solution. And by that, I mean, when we have a child who is needing a certain level of care, one of the struggles historically has been a provider's willingness to take a child who on paper clinically has a lot of complex issues, right? So with the state's decision to now increase those reimbursement rates for Medicaid, hopefully a provider would be a little bit more incentivized to, to take and accept a child with a really complex clinical profile.
But as far as foster, uh, foster families, wasn't it now where a family member can access funds?
Absolutely. That, you're absolutely right. So that is part of a solution as well in terms of kinship. We are going to be able to compensate families, whereas we haven't been able to do that in the past. You're absolutely correct.
Okay.
So hopefully that, that would part of be, be a part of a solution too.
Well, hopefully that, that would alleviate the, you know, the issue before we have to purchase a home, you know, for this. But I was gonna ask you, you know, you had mentioned that there's not been a week that's went by where there is a child in the emergency room sitting. And are the parents just dropping them off? Or are the parents not coming to pick them back up? Where, where's the parents at?
So a variety of different scenarios can play out, right? But what I'm specifically referencing is a child who's in our custody. So the responsibility is on us to get that child.
So it's not just abandoned?
Correct. Correct. Now, not to say that that can't be a, one possible scenario where a child had very significant clinical issues. The parent took them to the hospital for treatment. And then the parent refused to pick them up, in which case child welfare would then have to become involved. So that is, um, a scenario that has played out. And, but, but it's more common though, is it's a child who's already in our custody. And we don't have a solution for that child.
So if they're already in our custody, then they're already in a foster home or in another place, is that correct?
Well.
Or in a?
They could have been. They could have been in a foster home. They could have been in another residential treatment service. But then that, that caregiver chooses not to take that child back and we can't force them to.
Because of behavior issues?
Correct. That's exactly correct. Or the complexity of need. The, the complexity of the need is really what, um, drives a lot of the decision-making from a caregiver perspective, meaning that they feel like the child's needs are too extreme in terms of what they're able to handle as a caregiver.
And so these, these children are in the county's custody because in many instances, they've been removed from a home.
Correct.
Could be abuse, neglect, a, a, a long laundry list of reasons.
Correct.
And so, um, what, uh, what's capacity of house are you thinking would be appropriate?
Yeah. So, um, after talking with some of our child welfare teams in terms of how many kids we typically have in this kind of scenario where we're struggling to find a solution for them, we think that a four to five-bed home would be sufficient. So nothing too extreme in terms of six or eight beds, but four to five beds would really help us out a lot. So that ours childcare teams are not, our foster care teams are not struggling. We're not in a place where we're looking at having to house a child in a DSS facility or having to rent a hotel room to house a child. And these are all things that neighboring counties have had to do because they did not have an immediate solution for a child. And even though with the change in rates, not just for Medicaid services, but for the things that you're talking about in terms of kinship care, that's part of the issue. It's not the full issue. Because as I mentioned, it's the complexity of need that really drives caregivers' decision as to whether or not they welcome a child into their home.
So if, so if a child ends up and let's say that the county wants to go in this direction and purchase a home for this and, and the child goes into this, uh, home, how is it gonna be temporary? Because where are you gonna place them after that? And so we're not just buying up homes and putting kids in them because, you know, foster parents don't want them or... So, so what is the long-term solution in that?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Transition them out of this supposed to be a temporary housing?
Correct. Yes. This is by design would be a short-term solution for our children in custody. And so in what you're describing, we would continue to rely very heavily on our MCO and our other health plans to help us coordinate care and to efficiently and expeditiously transition those children to the next level of care. So we are hopeful that once, for instance, the Medicaid rates go into effect in two thousand and twenty-four, again, the providers will be more receptive to accepting children with more complex needs. But again, that's only one part of the issue. And the other thing that's really, really important across the board is to ensure that providers feel well-equipped to address the complex needs of these issues. And that's going to take time. That's going to take time. So one of the things that we would do if we decided to move in this direction is not only will we purchase the home, we would also do a bidding process to have a provider that would operate the home for us. And as part of that, what we would stipulate is that the provider can't, can't reject our children, right? So our, we, we would at least know that our child always had a place to go while we're working with partners and other health plans and our other community partners to find a long-term solution for that child. Or also to recruit more foster parents or to engage with a kinship provider to see if that kinship provider, what kinds of services and wraparound supports can we put in place to, um, entice that kinship provider to welcome that child into their home? So while we're working all of those different solutions, we know we have a safe option for our children in custody.
So it, it's really sad for the kids that are in this situation and, you know, um, but, so currently, you said that, you know, they would go into this temporary housing and then we would work with, um, the other partners that we have, you know, and partners being one of them. So what is the situation now where they're having to sit at the hos... Cause if they're having to sit at the hospital for a few days, if they're gonna, they're gonna sit at this house for a few days, what is the different? What, where are, where are community partners coming in to actually step in? Because it sounds like we're just getting them out of the hospital and not actually addressing the need then.
That's a really great point. So, um, when a ch, when a person, any person is in a hospital setting, as we know, and, and their insurance is paying for it, it doesn't matter if it's Medicaid, Medicare, or a commercial insurance plan. There is a concept called medical necessity. And your insurance company is not gonna pay for the service unless you meet medical necessity for that level of care. So when a person goes into a hospital and the hospital's done their due diligence and stabilized and resolved that issue and the person is ready for discharge, the insurance company no longer has to pay. But our child, again, is stuck there because we don't have another place for that child to go. What this does, especially with this new service definition, if it's approved by the state, this service definition by design is saying, the medical necessity part in terms of having it billed through an insurance company, i.e. Medicaid in this, um, that's exactly what the service definition says. And I will, if you wanted to talk a little bit more about that in terms of what the service definition, if it's approved by the state, will specifically state in terms of why the child can stay here and we can continue to pay the provider versus why they can't stay at the hospital.
So who's paying the bill at the hospital now whenever their care is complete and they're just?
That's why Atrium Health gets a little, gets a little salty with us because no one is paying.
And so I will talk a little bit about emergency transitional residential care, which is what the service we're calling. It is currently not approved by the state, but we do have it in possession of the state right now and they're currently reviewing it. So they are taking a process with that and hopefully they will get back with us soon. But, uh, in short, we're calling it ETRI. And it is a residential level three service, which Elise has, um, currently mentioned. But it is a pre-standing service and it is going to use evidence-based treatment in order to assess the children as they come in for services. The children ages will be between the ages of five and twenty-one. So we are starting relatively young because we are seeing the increased needs. In addition to assessments, there will also be skilled providers in the home to address the needs of the services of the children as well as prevent crisis. Generally, with our level, lower level of care, treatment, and services, the families do not have the extent to which the crisis of children are currently experiencing. And so how we've identified crisis, it is characterized as a serious conflict in the environment adding to emotional deregulation and removing from the home or community-based setting in the facility toward treatment and to receive staffing that would be set to de-escalate and further evaluate the child. So that is how we're defining children crisis at this point. And we're using that definition in order to secure funding for the placement of that child. So as she said, the acuity level ranges for these children. As, as you go up from a level one, which would just be like therapeutic foster care, you increase the level of acuity of the child, so level one, two, three, and four. And that licensing is in combination with that level of care for the children.
What would, uh, what would be the requirement of the people that work at that facility? Because that was one of the issues that we had heard about with the Concord House that we had nothing to do with. So what, what would the requirements be and education be for the people that are supervising these kids?
It would be leveled. You would have qualified professionals as well as clinical staff. And they would be in accordance with the state general statutes.
And so one of the things that, cause I did have a preliminary conversation with a provider that is operating a home that we're describing in Gaston County. And one of the things that they talked about, to your point, is making sure that, A, the individuals that are providing the service locally are local residents. So they recruited individuals to staff that home from the local community. And two, they made sure not only that they were paying them a living wage, but a beyond living wage. So this is actually a, a pretty high-dollar service as it's described to the state. And the reason for that is for the exact reason that Melissa just talked about in terms of the complexity of need for the children that will be served in this type of setting.
So, uh, I guess, so what are the budget implications to us? We, we purchase a house. We engage a service provider to operate it.
Correct.
And then some of the services may be reimbursable by Medicaid.
The operating expenses could potentially be reimbursable by Medicaid.
Right.
If the service definition is approved. I know this is a lot of ifs.
Yes.
A lot of things have to kinda, you know, come into place. The good news is, is that this is already on the state's radar. Partners is not the only MCO that has already taken a very similar service definition to the state because this is a problem across the state of North Carolina.
Right.
Where we are having kids staying in hotel rooms and DSS offices. And thankfully, we haven't had to do that yet here in Cabarrus County. But as I mentioned, we've had a seventy-five percent increase in the number of kids in custody in our jurisdiction in less than five years. And we're very concerned that if we don't have a solution in place, that we're gonna get to that place where we are having to make really hard decisions about where we're gonna house children because we don't have a solution for them. And so we're really trying to be proactive and get in front of the problem knowing what has happened in other jurisdictions here in the state.
Right. And, and that was gonna be my next question. What are we currently doing? So we have not found ourselves?
We, we have some, some kind of emergency housing, um, agreements with some placements outside of the county that we can leverage and, and that, that goes through partners in terms of funding those services as well. For instance, we have a relationship with the Relatives, um, which is located in Mecklenburg County. which is located in Mecklenburg County. We have a relationship with another entity, Emergency Placement Solution, that's in Gaston County. But those are temporary. They're, we're also competing with every other county in terms of finding those beds. And that would be part of this idea and solution is this would exclusively be for our kids. This would be Cabarrus County-owned, Cabarrus County-operated, and exclusively for our kids.
So Elise, currently, social workers are having to stay with the children after hours? Especially throughout the state? Someone who are having to spend the night in their offices and everything else?
And again, we, we haven't had to do it as much in Cabarrus County as other jurisdictions, but we know that that's, we can see, we can see the train coming towards us, and we're really trying to divert away from a crisis, so.
And so if we don't have a plan in pa- place, that could potentially be a very expensive proposition for, for the county?
Not only an expensive proposition because we would have to pay staff overnight to stay with these children and so on and so forth, but to your point, it is really detrimental to the children, right? In terms of not having a place to call, even a temporary place to call home, right? If we're having to, you know, come up with some makeshift solution in terms of housing them in a DSS office, or if we're having to contract with a hotel to, you know, provide some sort of solution and then paying our staff overnight to stay with those children. And again, I've, I've, as you all know, I came from another jurisdiction, and I've seen it, and I've seen it have to happen over and over and over again when we don't have solutions in place.
So is, is this the same situation that we've been talking about, some of the other facilities that we're looking to build? If there is a room available, are they available to other counties to bring children in too as well?
Well, so...
Or can we limit it?
At one point, we were talking about, well, maybe we could tack on something to our Behavioral Health Center, right? In terms of our emergency housing solution. And we could have potentially opened that up to other jurisdictions as well. The drawback to that is, is that our Behavioral Health Center is not slated to be opened until 2026. And again, we need a solution sooner than that. The other part of the reason why it would probably be more advantageous for us to look for a home is because, remember, these children will be enrolled in Cabarrus County schools. And so we want to make things as normal as possible for them so they can ride the school bus. And, you know, school bus would, you know, come through the neighborhood and pick them up and take them. And we also want them involved in other activities, that's right. Whereas, you know, children in the, that we're serving in our Behavioral Health Center, they will be educated in the center, right? Because it's a secured facility. And so we just wanted to be able to kind of differentiate, you know, those children who need that level of care and these children who we would prefer to place in a more home-like setting to make things as normal for them as possible as we're also, again, working with our community partners to come up with longer-term solutions for them in terms of residential care and services.
So if, if, if there's two rooms vacant, can another county send and fill those two up? And then three weeks later, we may have two children that need to be in there? How does that work? Is it, I know some of the other facilities that it does work that way.
And so this is, this would potentially be a Medicaid-billable service. So for that, there would have to be a child in the bed in order for us to compensate the provider, unless the county was willing to pay the provider regardless of whether or not the beds, the beds were full. So that is something that we need to do more due diligence on and coming back to you with a more, more defined funding plan in terms of what would we, what we would do in that type of scenario. Right now, we've just opened to the, we wanted to introduce the concept to you so that we can start our, our due diligence and looking at all potential solutions. And part of that solution might be partnering with another county in some way. So for instance, I'm just throwing this out there as a, like, if it was a Union-Cabarrus kind of home, like maybe Union has two beds and Cabarrus has two beds, or something along those lines. But then, we also have to think through, how are we going to get our kids to school if it's not located here in Cabarrus County? Because they would be Cabarrus County residents, they would be enrolled in Cabarrus County schools, and so on and so forth. So there's all of those intricacies that we really, really have to think through and at keeping at the fore, what is in the best interest of these children?
I'm going to be a little more direct with my question. If we get a five-bed house, do we have to allow other counties to use any of those beds?
No, we don't have to.
Okay. We can, we can reserve those beds exclusively for the use of Cabarrus County children.
Absolutely.
You was a little more direct than I was.
Yeah.
So this level of home doesn't require that? Then we, like some of the other levels, we have to allow people coming in from all over the state?
Well, this particular service is going to be open. And as Elise has said, we can write that specifically, just like the home she's mentioned that's currently here in Cabarrus County. Because Mecklenburg County has provided that funding, that home is specifically for Mecklenburg County residents. But you also have to keep in mind and consider transportation and other things in mind. You'll be transporting that child from Meck to Cabarrus or from Union or whatever other county you would be partnering with in order to ensure that the services stay specific to that child in this county.
Right. So Meck has a home in Gaston County. They also have a home here in Cabarrus. They just opened both of those homes. And now they are having to figure out how we're going to get our kids to school.
Reoperationalization.
Right. So that's the advantage of us having the home here in Cabarrus County for our kids. Because then all we're doing is we're working with Cabarrus County schools to get that house on the route.
So why did Mecklenburg County get homes in all the surrounding counties and not their own? What is the reasoning?
They do have them in their own, but because of the increase in, in children that are in care and in services, there's a need, and they, they found providers that would be willing to work with them in order to service those children, so.
Elise, do you have homes, one for the boys, one for the girls, or is it...
That's a great question. So we, we wouldn't necessarily differentiate. I mean, we would, we would structure the home in terms of the renovations where there was some sort of division between genders, right? Like maybe have two bedrooms on one side, two bedrooms on the other side. But the home would be open to all children. And again, in terms of the staffing structure and the supervision, that's, you know, just like, you know, I have three kids. I have two girls and a boy. They all lived under the same roof, right? And so this would be the same kind of concept in terms of making sure that we have the appropriate staff in place that can provide adequate supervision.
So why does the MCOs not try to do this right? And then cut us out as the middleman? Because I feel like we're the middleman in this. Whenever the U-, the MCOs could do this directly, we're already contracting with them to do the service. So here we are, like I said, being a middleman and spending more money. We're, we're already contracting with them to, to provide these services. So why are they not doing this? I know you may not know all.
And I'll, I'll take a stab at answering that if, if you'd be so kind. So a couple of things. One, just as a reminder, these are our children. They're in Cabarrus, they're in Cabarrus County custody. And so we are responsible for ensuring that they have appropriate and safe residential options while they're in our care. That's one. Two, you know, our MCO partners are invaluable partners at the table. There's just no question about that. And we also have to be mindful of the fact that their services are for those individuals that meet criteria for those services, going back to that medical necessity that I was talking about before. They are an insurance company, right? And so in order for you to be eligible for any service that they provide, the, this child person needs to meet medical necessity for that service. So, and they're writing this service definition, they're essentially going sort of outside. That's why they have to get permission from the state. They're going sort of outside of that to say, hey, this would be open for children in custody. So really, they are really going above and beyond, in my opinion, with even requesting this service definition because it's outside of the realm a little, a little bit in terms of what they would normally provide. So I'm very, very grateful that they are even considering this, and they propose this to the state, whereas this would now be a Medicaid-billable service. Whereas before, Cumberland County is a great example. Cumberland County paid for the service exclusively. They paid for the home, they paid for the provider, they paid for the ongoing operations. And so this is a new day where now our MCOs are willing to come to the table so that this can be a Medicaid-billable service. So that's the other part. The other part that I think is just important for us to be mindful of, and this is no slide on partners at all, but as we all know, under Medicaid transformation, there will be a new health plan that's exclusively for children in custody. We don't know who that health plan will be at this point. The state is putting out a, an RFP. My understanding is that the decision will be made a year from now, in December of 2024. So it might be partners if they decide to bid on it, or it might be a completely different health plan. And so I say that to say, even though they're an invaluable partner in all of this, in my opinion, we can't rely exclusively on partners because we don't know who the health plan's going to be long-term for our kids in foster care. Because there's going to be a statewide plan for every child in foster care across the entire state, which may or may not be partners.
Well, and I know that our MCOs, they, as you said, they provide, you know, great services. And I don't think any of our comments here are sliding anybody on any of that. And of course, these kids are what are important. And that's what we want to focus on. But there are realities of the situation that we have to, we have to consider and, and, you know, weigh options. So, you know, I don't think any of our comments here are sliding the kids or, you know, any of the MCOs on those.
Thank you.
Yeah, so some of these kids have no medical issues whatsoever.
Correct.
It may just be their issues in their home. And we are required to, to take care of them.
That's correct, that's correct.
And so this, in many ways, is a discussion of how can we best do what we are required to do? And it's, and what is the most cost-efficient way to do that? And so I, I guess, and, you know, you've referred to the Mecklenburg County facility a couple times. And my understanding of that is a little bit different than, than what we may have talked about here, that maybe some of those are more intense cases. I, and I'm not sure if I have the correct information or not, but there's been some indication that the children involved in that facility go during the day to the offices of that service provider that they have a facility where they educate them. I mean, they're not enrolled in public schools.
It's a day treatment program, that's correct.
And, and that sort of thing. And so I think that takes us to the, the next question, which is a little bit more difficult. But the sensitivity of where this is located.
Sure.
And of course, there's been quite a bit of discontent amongst the neighborhood where, where the Mecklenburg facility is, is currently located. I think those conversations are ongoing. But I, I would, unless you have some magic words you can give me to make me feel better about that, I'm, I'm suspect, suspecting that we would deal with that similar type issue.
It's possible. I think you are absolutely right, sir, in terms of we need to be strategic on where we purchase the home. And, you know, and I don't know anything of, I don't, all I know is the end product in terms of what happened with Mecklenburg. I don't know all the conversations that occurred between A to Z, right? So I don't know, for instance, if they engage the neighbors, if they talk to the neighbors, or if they just went in and bought the home and then the neighbors found out after the fact. What I would suggest, what I would suggest is that if we decide to purchase a home in a neighborhood, that we engage the neighbors and we talk to them, and we get their buy-in, and we talk, you know, if they have any concerns, and how can we allay those concerns? And if it really is a barrier, we look for a different property somewhere else, right? So I think there's a way to do it to ensure that the community is supporting what we are doing.
Right. Well, and I certainly agree with you and have the greatest compassion for, for the situation that these, that these children are in. And certainly appreciate your efforts to try to anticipate a solution that, number one, is going to be better for the welfare of the children, and number two, is going to be better from a budgetary standpoint for the taxpayers of Cabarrus County. And I think that's what we're talking about.
Right. Now, having said that, there will be some circumstances where even in terms of operating expenses, it would fall to the county. And one possible scenario is if there is a child that we place there who is undocumented. I e, they're ineligible for Medicaid, so they couldn't, we couldn't leverage the service. But those examples are few and far between. Most of the kids that are in custody, they have Medicaid, and as the service definition is approved, then we should be able to leverage the service, again, if it's approved.
Yeah. And so if I understand correctly, you are looking for feedback from us as to whether you should proceed forward in the due diligence process?
That's correct, that's correct. I'm, I'm just asking for permission to engage in this project and bring back additional information, figures, a prospective provider, and then also hopefully awaiting a response from the state to partners as to whether or not this would be a Medicaid bill.
My answer would be yes. And I'll open the floor for others.
I, I absolutely think we should proceed with it. I'd like to, like I said, maybe work on some options, see if hospitals would split it. But regardless of that, I absolutely would like to see us pursue this.
Great.
Yeah, I could have that down too, the hospital.
Yep.
Oh, yes.
Because it does remove them from the emergency rooms. It does remove them.
It benefits both sides at that point, so.
So one, one last question on the transportation. If, if, if ours children are going to Mecklenburg and Mecklenburg, doesn't, doesn't, to go to school, do, are they actively enrolled in school as well? You say they, they do.
Yes. So children who are placed in this...
So McKinney-Vento, and that, that, that's right, right? The schools have to supply the transportation?
Yes. So for our, I can only speak for Cabarrus County. So for Cabarrus County kids, these would be Cabarrus County youth. And we would work with the school district to ensure that our kids got through to school through Cabarrus County schools' resources, transportation resources, yes, whatever that looked like.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't, I don't want to muddy the water or anything, Elise, but when you're talking about transportation, getting the kids to school, this and that and all, where do they fall when it comes to the McKinney-Vento?
Yes.
Because you know, you know how that works. We have to bus those kids to wherever.
But technically, they're not homeless because they're in our custody. So that's where it's a little, it's a little muddy, you know? But, but I also do feel very confident that we can work with Cabarrus County schools to, and to come up with a transportation solution. Because these are Cabarrus County residents.
And this service would also provide transportation as well. There would be some extent to transportation.
From the provider.
From the provider.
Right. Chris, you got your mic?
Yeah. If you're looking for feedback. So for me, I think there's too many ifs for me to say, you know, location.
Yep.
If, you know, I, I would certainly encourage that we try to have the hospital engage financially in this. You know, placement, obviously, that's the biggest thing. And, yeah, financially, so. For me, I think there's too many ifs. If, also, you know, this increased funding for, you know, foster families for reimbursement in the kinship placements, maybe that will help alleviate. I mean, that was just implemented, so.
Yes.
Potentially, that will, you know, help eliminate this issue. And it may not. But, but the reason that that was done was to, to help alleviate this issue. And hopefully, that will correct it.
So when you're saying there are too many ifs, are you saying, don't do further due diligence to get the answers?
I just need more answers. Yeah, I just need more answers, so.
Well, I mean, I guess I, I guess...
I understand what you're saying, but...
Yeah, what I'm trying to say is, how is she going to get the answers if we don't?
You've got three here that already said, yeah, go move forward with it.
You said, you said, yes, move forward.
I said that you already have three that said, yes, move forward with it. For me, like I said, there's just too many ifs, and, and so I'm fine with getting more information.
So you're making, you're making me reevaluate my decision. I'm thinking if there are too many ifs, maybe, maybe we shouldn't move forward with it.
Well, I mean, I, I, I'm not opposed to getting more information, as I said, but a lot of these, I don't think we need to get too far down the road with it until a lot of these questions are answered. So it's a gray area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm kind of with, with Chris as well. I mean, there's some what ifs, but if she does her due diligence, that's going to answer our questions, so.
Right.
We got to go forward to get, so we can make the right decision.
I, I just want to say thank you for, for the statement you made. This, this is not going anywhere.
That's correct.
Anytime soon. And the fact that you can see the train coming and you're trying to get out in front of it, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions before we wrap this one up?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time for your time.
Okay, we have been at it for about an hour and a half, so I would suggest that we take a brief break and reconvene at five minutes until six.
Doing the volunteer fire department is, it's a calling.
I still get the satisfaction of meeting people and knowing that I helped them.
A lot of times, we don't get many thank yous for what we do, but every so often you do, and, you know, that makes you think the job you're doing is worthwhile.
When you have a thank you card that's sent, or somebody that stops by the station, or even the Hearts and Heroes event that is put on every year, it's just an opportunity for first responders to see that the job that they're doing is worth it, and then it's making a difference.
Never come across anybody who is not grateful that we show up, and they'll say, how much do we owe you? And we'll say, it's free. We are volunteers. We do this because we enjoy helping people.
Being a volunteer firefighter is one of the best things you can be. You are just doing this out of the goodness of your heart.
Both of my parents were volunteers to start out. They got to help people and they really connected with people, and I wanted to do the same.
Being a volunteer firefighter is rewarding, is challenging, and it's vital.
It's the satisfaction of knowing that you've helped somebody that needed juice. It's not always at their good point that they call you.
I guess felt the pleasure of helping others. I've got to help get others out of wrecked cars, and I've seen them live, like I said, just the satisfaction of helping others.
My name is Ashley Petthel. I am a member of Allen Fire Department, and I have been a member since 2004. I am a secondary mathematics educator for Cabarrus County Schools. Should I talk about how awesome it is to be married to the fireteam? The one who told me that I couldn't do it. I was starting to apply for jobs and thought that a first aid class would look really good on my resume. The only class that was posted on the board was an EMT, Emergency Medical Technician Course, and I heard someone behind me say, there's no way you can do that. You don't like the sight of blood and you throw up over everything. That led me to a challenge. So I started the EMT class. I remember throwing up on my first ride day. I did make it all the way to the hospital and transfer care of my patient before I threw up, so that was a win. But at the very end of the EMT class, they told me that I should consider joining a agency. Allen was my local fire department for the area that I lived, and so I joined as a first responder. Really much to my amazement, I loved being an EMT. I loved responding to calls. I really love serving the community and serving the patients and being able to see that you could make a difference. For anybody that is looking into joining as a volunteer, I would encourage them just to take that step.
My name is Gabriel Cubos. I'm with Allen Volunteer Fire Department, and I've been doing this for almost a year now. Ever since I was little, I knew I always wanted to be a fireman. I can't really say when it started, but I already just knew I had that inside me. Growing up, it just got stronger and stronger. I'd see emergency vehicles going by, and I would just stare at them and all. I knew I wanted to be a fireman, but I just didn't know how to start the process. I remember I did a Google search on volunteer fire departments, and somehow, because I'm not even in Allen's district, but Allen popped up. And I saved the address, finally built up some courage, and I went to that front door, and I just said, hey, I'm from Miami and I, I want to know how to become a fireman. And immediately, they greeted me with a smile and they gave me an application. And within a week of getting the application, I started my fire academy process. And in two months' time, I had my fire one and two, and I knew that's who I wanted to be, that's what I wanted to do. Being a firefighter is rewarding. I know it's cliche, and almost every firefighter says that it's rewarding and that it's the best job in the world, and it is the best job in the world, but until you're on the fire truck and until you're actually doing it yourself, you see all types of walks of life, diversity, and whatever comes, especially in Cabarrus County. And being able to help almost everybody you can see or attempt to help everybody, that is the most best feeling you could ever have. And being a firefighter is just truly rewarding.
My name is Murphy Paget. I'm a junior volunteer at the Rymer Fire Department, and I've been doing this for three months. Both of my parents were junior volunteers when they were kids, and it really motivated me to join as well. What inspired me most is they got to help people and they really connected with people, and I wanted to do the same. My experience in the past three months has been very exciting. I've gotten to do things that I've never thought I could do. After graduation, I plan to go to a four-year college and get a degree and go on to medical school. It is really rewarding, and you get a lot of satisfaction when you do things like this.
A lot of things have changed in 50 years, new trucks, new equipment, but I think the thing that has stayed the same most of the time is the people. We're like a big family. Everyone takes care of everybody else, you know, whether it's a fire or whether it's here at the station. Probably all fire departments in the county have that bond.
A lot of things you hear about firefighters or being a fireman is about brotherhood. And, you know, you might hear it and you might brush it off, think that's cliche or whatnot, but you could be needing help at three in the morning, four in the morning, if it's something emotional, physical, there's always somebody there, and that's a genuine thing about the fire service.
This department's like, it's like family. Try to help each other. Most of us grew up here together. Most of us went to school together, rode buses together. It's just like a big family here at the fire department.
It's just like having a bunch of brothers and sisters, really.
We are basically a family here. It's not too big not to know who everybody is. We all know each other by names. We all can pick and play completely like a family.
I have a very good relationship with the people that work here. They're family to me. It's my, it's my second family. This, this could be my home away from home. There's a huge camaraderie. It's, it's a brotherhood, and you always have people you can talk to, and I just think it's the greatest thing in the world.
Another sovereign, sovereign citizen. So this guy.
No, no, I was my dad, sorry.
He's got a bunch of claims that came up like sixty, seven years ago. So there's a statute of limitations problem on the service. You didn't have to get into governmental immunity or any of that stuff. It's crazy, it's like.
Okay, I think everybody is back from the break, so we will proceed ahead with item 4.6 from Department of Human Services, Senior Health Insurance Information Program. And we're glad to have Anthony Hodges for that item.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you today. Today, I'm talking about the, the SHIP program, the Senior Health Insurance Information Program. And this is a program, as you know, it's set up to assist those Medicare beneficiaries in the county with, throughout the year, signing up for Medicare, changing Medicare plans, and then the, kind of the, the big event for the year is Medicare, the Part D Open Enrollment for the Drug Plans, and that's actually going on right now and ends this week. But we are, that, that program is funded through a couple of different grants, one federal and one state, through the Department of Insurance. And for FY '24, when we did the budget, we didn't, we didn't have the state fund, figures at that time, so we budgeted based on last year's numbers, which were, was $9,756. Well, once the state improved their budget, we got the state funding, the actual amount is $15,677, so that's, that's the increase, and that there's no county funding or county match required for that. So I'm just asking for approval of the budget amendment to add those funds to the, the budget.
Okay. Any questions for Anthony? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 4.7, Emergency Management, Squad 410 Career Development Plan Proposal. Glad to have Jason Burnett with us on that item. And Jacob?
All right. Chairman Morris, commissioners, good evening. I appreciate you taking the opportunity to listen to our Fire Services Career Development Plan. I do have Fire Marshal Jacob Thompson here with me this evening, as he oversees the Fire Services Division, in case there's any specific questions in regards to that. While our overall focus is fire services, we're kind of looking at Squad 410. I did want to kind of start off and give a background in case any of our listeners or citizens wants to know what Squad 410 actually is, so I want to give a quick background on that. So Squad 410 and the history of that unit went into service January 18th of 2017. It is a full-time firefighter manpower unit that provides, their primary mission is to provide supplemental firefighting services to the 12 volunteer and combination fire departments within Cabarrus County. It started as a 10-hour program. It quickly transitioned the next year in March to a 12-hour program, and then in October of 2019, finally went to the current staffing model that we have, which is a 24-hour staffing. So just wanted to kind of give you, oh goodness, a quick background on, sorry, that changed, on the squad itself. So moving forward, the, I kind of wanted to give So moving forward, I kind of wanted to give you an update on where the vacancies and our recent turnover is. So we had three current full-time firefighter position vacancies, but I'm happy to report that hopefully by January, that unit will be fully staffed. So this proposal and plan actually comes at a very good time for those individuals as well. We also, since the inception of the program back in 2017, we had 21 full-time position resignations and separations. So we have had some significant turnover, but proposals like this are what we're kind of aiming at, to try to improve that over the future life of the program itself. So again, some of the top reasons that we're seeing for turnover is lower starting pay compared to other career departments in the region. And also, what we're here tonight to talk about, which is no career development, or the ability to really promote unless they're looking at the fire captain position. So the proposal that we're looking at in the next couple of slides is going to kind of focus on what those positions are, kind of in between the firefighter and the fire captain itself. So to give you a quick kind of overview of our staffing, we have one fire operations chief that is full-time, that oversees Squad 410 unit. We have three fire captain positions that are full-time. We have nine firefighter positions that are full-time. And then currently, we have about four entry-level firefighter slash firefighter positions that are part-time. So that kind of gives you the staffing as it is today. So as we kind of started this endeavor, we worked with human resources to kind of come up with what is currently in the county that would kind of be closely aligned to what we're looking at. And we kind of looked at both other public safety agencies, which is EMS and the Sheriff's Office. And from that, we saw that the EMS has a senior paramedic and a master paramedic position. We also saw that Sheriff's Office has a senior deputy and a master deputy position, and those were similar type positions that we were already looking at. So the proposal is to look at a senior firefighter position, and then in lieu of a master firefighter position, calling that a fire lieutenant position. Fire lieutenant position is actually a position that was already in place within the county when we had the 10-hour shifts back in the day. It kind of went dormant, but in comparison and looking across the state and across the region, you'll see the fire lieutenant terminology more often than you will the master firefighter. And we also see that as a benefit in the future, as we start to look at salary comparisons and other things, as we're kind of looking at light position requirements, the fire lieutenant kind of rises to the top. So in looking at the senior firefighter position, the proposal here before you is looking at a number of different requirements for that. So in kind of going back and doing the research to try to see what specifically would be needed, we wanted to also make it a challenge for the individuals as well, as they start focusing on this future path. So obviously, a few things to kind of highlight is they will need to be with the county for 18 months in the rank of that firefighter position. A couple certifications, which we feel are important to the overall future growth of the program, technical rescuer being one of those. We continue to hear from a number of the fire departments in the county that they need staffing that have that specialty component of technical rescuer. So not only focused on firefighting, but also as we get motor vehicle accident calls that may have some type of unique component to them, we get certain types of other types of high-angle trench rescue, confined space, collapse, things of that nature. So as we're able to start focusing on that and getting staff up to that speed, we're going to be able to provide that knowledge and training on the scene to be able to further assist with certain types of those incidents that we may be responding to. Obviously, as you get to that senior firefighter level, that expectation is that you're also going to be driving that vehicle. So we put emergency vehicle driver certification in there as well, to make sure that they understand, if they haven't had the background on that, what the expectations are and what it is when you really go from driving a normal vehicle to driving a vehicle under emergency traffic conditions with lights and sirens. There would also be a senior firefighter task book that would have assessments and evaluations as a part of that, that would have to be completed. And then also 1,500 hours of documented emergency services-related training as well, again, since the start of their employment with the county. So moving across to the next position, the fire lieutenant, again, meeting all the requirements of a senior firefighter, successfully complete two years as a senior firefighter. A couple of different certifications are more kind of mid-management level type positions, so fire instructor, fire officer. We want them to be able to teach as well, so that's one component of that. So as they're going through this process, and they are getting these certifications and training, we also need them to be focused on kind of training up our, you know, our senior firefighters and our firefighters as well over time. But this is also kind of a relief captain position as well. So when that fire captain is out of the mix, whether that be vacation or off-duty from that aspect of it, then this position could actually stand up and focus on providing the direction for that particular unit during the time that the captain is away. So focusing on some command level, incident command level training, and some initial officer level training as well, that we feel would be beneficial to that position. Of course, completion of another task book with assessments and evaluations, and then an additional 500 hours of additional training dedicated to emergency services. So it'd actually be a total of 2,000 hours of training from the time they started at the firefighter, as they progressed through senior firefighter to the fire lieutenant position itself. So with that proposal, we'll create a new staffing model, which will be a fire operations chief still, three fire captain positions. Being that the fire lieutenant itself would be supplementing the fire captain position, there would be three, or up to three, fire lieutenant positions. Senior firefighter positions, there would not be a cap on that, so any of the firefighters that were there could go through the process and promote up to senior firefighter. And then, of course, the firefighter, and then the entry-level firefighter firefighter part-time positions would be the proposal on that. So why now, and why do we want to look at this from this aspect? So obviously, you saw the turnover. Obviously, you're aware of some of the struggles that we've had with the program since inception. So we're looking at ways to build our internal pipeline, to identify future leaders for this program. We're also looking at ways that we can retain and invest in our personnel. We do spend a lot of budgetary money whenever we have retention issues. When people leave us, it costs money to bring in more people to do that. So we hire them, we equip them, we train them, and then they leave. But they're taking with them that vital knowledge and that training that they acquired while they're here. So they gain, and we unfortunately have to start over in that process. So from a fiscal budget standpoint, we are not asking for any funds this evening, as we're projecting out that the first senior firefighter positions would be funded potentially in the next budget year, '24, '25. And looking at kind of projecting out where our staff would be, potentially fiscal year '26, '27 would be when the first lieutenants would actually come online, based on the timing of the requirements and everything that's associated with that. So any budgetary impacts would be seen in our next budget process that we're going through, that we're getting ready to start here soon. So that would be identified through that. So to kind of wrap up, we're still working on the grades that these positions would have with HR, so we're finalizing that out. But we're wanting to go ahead and put this before you for approval at your next meeting, so that we can start the process in January of next year. That also gives them an incentive to start working towards this. The staff that are already kind of in that current pipeline, as they're wanting to kind of progress through, we want to go ahead and give them the opportunity to start that process. And then, of course, we'll work out the specifics as to where the grade is and funding and things of that nature will follow. But we wanted to go ahead and get that out in front of you now, so that we could get that approval, so that we could go ahead and give them a kind of a roadmap to start this process. So of course, we'll entertain any questions that you may have in regards to this proposal.
And of course, we have had some previous discussion about this, so I suspect that might be the reason for a lack of questions, but did anybody have anything? I think this is a good proposal. I think it hopefully will accomplish the goal that you've set out, and it does provide for some progression and some reasons to retain and to better themselves, which I think we all benefit from. So thank you for the presentation and the proposal.
And Commissioner Orkman, just to follow up on some of our discussion from our meeting, we've been doing our meetings with the fire chiefs. We made it a point to try to go bi-annually and meet with all the fire chiefs and sit down, and we've had some very positive feedback from the couple meetings that we've had over the last couple of weeks on the relationship with the folks. And that's the other thing about this, is developing our people professionally and adding some integrity to what this program is. And that's, as Jason said, a lot of the feedback that we've gotten is the desire for that next level of certification in those more technical realms. And so by having this and being able to incentivize people a little bit more is definitely going to be a positive to add some integrity to that, too.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 4.8 from Information Technology Services Budget Amendment for 911 PC Purchase, and we're happy to have Todd Chanley for that item.
Good evening. I'm here to ask you to approve a budget amendment that will reimburse the 911 fund for the amount of $20,099. This came due to the fact that the 911 board has set a limit for the amount that we can get reimbursed for, for a PC. So we replaced 16 devices for the 911 center last year in June, and the individual price for the devices that we purchased was $3,400. We, as a county, felt like those were the devices that were necessary to run the 911 services. The 911 board has capped that eligible amount at $2,300, so we are using the funds from our PC replacement budget, which we typically use to buy those PCs anyway, so that $36,800 that we got from the 911 board is cream or new to the process anyway. So we are working that out and reimbursing that 911 fund with this item.
Any questions for Todd? All right, I think you have the next item as well.
I do. So the, every five years, we sign a new lease or rental agreement for our county copiers. We currently have 82 units across the county, so that services the devices that the public use in the library, the folks that use them at social services, the multiple devices that are in this building. So we have selected Sharp as the vendor that we want to use for the next five years. We have done business with them in the past. They are not the current incumbent. The good news to this piece, to this contract, is that our current estimated amount that we spend a month is $18,878. The new contract will be estimated at $17,069, so that's a savings of $1,800 a month. So that came out of a good negotiation on the click charge per unit. We are changing the way we structure that as well, as we innovate and try to print less. We will see a savings on that as well. Currently, in our past contracts, we've always put in a threshold of we prepaid this certain amount. So even though we do innovate very strongly, we still print about 335 pages a month in black and white, and 127,000 of those in color every month. So if we reduce those, we'll immediately see those savings, so we're working through that. But I guess the action would be to ask you to authorize the county manager to sign or execute that contract after the legal review and audit by the finance department.
Questions for Todd? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, item 4.10, Budget Amendment for the Mount Pleasant Collection for the Library. We're happy to have Melanie Hollis here.
Good evening. Thank you. It seems sort of early to ask for a budget amendment for purchasing materials, but we need to start working with our vendor, who is Ingram, to start getting materials ordered, because that all needs to be processed, and that takes time. And we want to have a collection ready to move into the facility when we move in summer of '24. So we need to start getting those books purchased now, if anybody has any questions. We did just get some photos the other day that there are beams up at the Mount Pleasant site.
Great. So this is just an expansion of the current collection?
Right. When we move into the new building, we're going to have lots of empty shelves, so we want to get some new materials to put on those shelves.
Great.
We are also, as we are removing especially large print books, large print books tend to only be published one edition, and if something happens to the book, we can very rarely reorder it. So as we're withdrawing some of our large print books from our other collections, we are storing them, so that we'll be able to use them at Mount Pleasant and save some money that way.
Yeah, great. Questions for Melanie? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, from Planning Department, Budget Amendment for Duke Power Rebate Funds Adjustment. We're happy to have Susie Morris with us for that item.
Good evening. This is a quick budget amendment for the Duke Power Rebate Fund program that the county participates in. Duke has a program where customers that receive weatherization services that are also Duke Power customers, we can get a rebate for that money, so essentially, it kind of turns into a revolving fund. They did issue that rebate. It's about $18,000, so we just need to get that money added into the budget for community development, so that those funds can be used for additional Duke customers.
Okay. Questions for Susie? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 4.12, Annual Bond Approvals. And you have a list of those before you, and those are the bonds for the finance directors, register of deeds, the sheriff, tax administrator, and the human resources director. Anybody have any questions or comments on that one? Okay, and next up is appointments to boards and committees. You also have a report of all of those in front of you, as well as you should have received an email of all the applications, et cetera. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that, on the appointment items? All righty, then we move to item 4.14, and that is Annual Policy Review. That has got, that includes our rules of procedure, our appointment policy, and our economic development grant program. Starting with the rules of procedure, I think that they have, there have been some changes or some clarifications on, and I'll call on Lauren for a little help. Is there any change other than the appointment, the replacement policy? And I think we've had some previous discussion. Are there other items?
On the vacancy?
The board vacancy, a vacancy.
That was the only one on this edition.
Yeah, and I think that's page 188.
Rule 37.
Rule 37. Yeah, and so it outlines to the voting procedure to fill a vacancy on the board, and the process that we would follow. I think each time in the past, which of course, we hope not to, but we did have to use it once already this year. So does anybody have any questions or comments on that, or do you feel some? This spells out how we would vote, on how we would receive nominations, how we would vote. And it specifies voting will be by written ballot. Although those ballots are not secret ballots, they would be publicized, but this gives a scoring process as to how we would come up with an answer on that. So any questions, comments, discussion? It also addresses tie votes, as well. It also addresses tie votes as well. Tie, tie, if we had a tie. Yeah. Yeah. Which, that has a, a scoring process. Okay. So, and then, then the other policies, which I think did not have changes. This is just our annual review and approval of those. So does anybody have any, any items on those? Okay. If not, then we will move to item 4.15, Resolution for Interim Human Services Director. As, as I think you all have been notified, Karen Calhoun, our current Human Services Director, has announced her retirement. And this resolution makes provisions for Elise Pugh to serve as the interim director until that position is filled.
I will just note that it will need to be director, not interim, from you all, just so that she has all the abilities as the director to make those decisions until someone is hired.
Okay.
So we will make this change for the regular meeting, so it will say director, not interim.
Okay.
I think we sent, sent the announcement out, but Elise says here, she, she, we repurposed or re-did the job description for Kyle's position as Assistant County Manager, and Elise is now Assistant County Manager of Behavioral Health and Human Services. And now that there is a vacancy, she'll have a dual role until we are able to fill that position there. So, so we will start, I believe we start interviewing in January on that, that position to fill the human services position. But human services will fall under Elise as well.
Questions or comments on that item? Okay. And so we move to item 4.16, Resolution Establishing Board of Commissioners 2024 Meeting Schedule. You have that all before you and there, we have, have a number of meetings and work sessions that fall on holidays next year, as isn't normally the case. And so these has, those adjustments on it, as well as July the 6th, well, a couple of, yeah, the NACO Annual Conference Adjustment. Any questions on that item? Okay. Then we will move to the approval of the regular meeting agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. I do not think we have taken any action. Well, let's see, did the one item for the Sheriff's Department, so, yeah, so we would need to delete item E26, since we've already taken care of that tonight. Does anyone see any other changes or additions?
I would like to move item E14 and E15 to new business. And that appointment policy is the, that's the one addressing the vacancy, Commissioner vacancy.
No. Appointment policy is for your boards and committees.
Okay. So then is it?
That's within the rules of procedure for the vacancy one.
Okay. Well, that's the one I want to put on new business then.
Then that's on your rules of procedure.
Where, which?
18.
18. Okay. Yeah. I see now. Okay. So I would like to move 18, 15, and 18 to new business.
Okay. Move items E15 and E18 to new business. Okay. Any other changes or adjustments? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda with the requested changes of moving item E15 and E18 to new business. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we do have need of a closed session tonight. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, A3 and 5, to discuss pending litigation and acquisition of real property. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes and we are now in closed session. We thank everybody in our audience for joining us tonight, and we will see you back on December 18th at 6:30 PM for our regular meeting. Thank you.